I'd like to call the December 17th, 2015 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order, and we start every meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Roberta Everslage, Bill Henderson, Matt Courtney, Gary Anderson, Jerry Bowers, and Tom Lally.
Thank you. We now move to the open forum section. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum, period, during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise a subject of review by the college or the board. There are no registered speakers for the open agenda forum section of tonight's board agenda. So we will move next to awards and recognitions. Dr. Dr. Sockchek.
Trustee Sharp, we have no awards or recognitions this evening.
Oh, great. Record time. We now move to Mr. Rives with the Student Senate report.
Well, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come here today. It is always an honor and a pleasure for me. Student Senate has had an extraordinary semester that exceeded my expectations in every way. And so I'd like to share with you kind of a recap of our semester to demonstrate what a marvelous organization I get to be a part of. When I joined Student Senate last spring, I've said this before, there were only about 15 senators there. We're supposed to have 30. This year, we've gotten up to 29. Right now, we are at 25 of our 30 seats filled. And that filling those seats has really paved the way to do some other great things this semester. Two of the most regular functions in Student Senate are approving new clubs and providing funds to existing clubs for activities and trips. This semester, we approved seven new clubs, and we have distributed $23,123 to nine clubs. And I'd like to note that the nature of a lot of those budget requests that we get have really impressed me. We have several clubs that are tied to specific degree programs, like the Graphic Design Student Association, the Hospitality Management Club, the Interior Design Club, and the Student Kansas Association of Interpreters. In each of these clubs, we're asking for money to fund programs or events or trips that would help, they'd help the students get jobs, they'd help the students get experience, and also they really help bring prestige to the college. We also had, excuse me, we also had clubs that were not tied to specific degree programs, like Veterans Club and International Club, and they requested funds. And again, they were from programs that contributed to the education of the students involved. So I was really amazed this semester to learn about everything that clubs are doing around campus. Student Senate has also hosted several events this semester, and in my opinion, each one of these events has been a great success in its own way. We hosted Trick or Treat for Kids, our annual event that provides a safe and fun environment for kids to come celebrate Halloween. And we also recently hosted Photos with Santa. One of my favorite things that we hosted, though, was JCC gives. And as many of you know, JCC gives is a program that allows members of the JCC community to help families in need here at the college. This year, we raised a record $2,500. And in addition to that, we received, I'm sorry, I'm not talking very well tonight. We received a huge pile of gifts. Through these donations, we were able to help 10 families. And each of these families said that without JCC gives, they would have been unable to celebrate Christmas this year. One family even said that they had not put up their Christmas tree this year because they knew they wouldn't have anything to put under it. So thanks to gives and to the donations we received from everybody here at the school, including the Board of Trustees, they were able to have Christmas. So I'd like to thank everybody here who was involved, either in JCC gives or also in Shave to Give, because we had a lot of fun dying Dr. Sockchek's hair pink.
I enjoyed it also, John. We look forward to next semester and see what you can come up with.
Have to come up with something even more crazy next time.
Oh, good. That's good.
The remaining two events we hosted this year were town hall meetings. One of them was on campus safety, and the other one was on inclusion. And these two meetings were important to me because they helped fulfill one of Student Senate's main jobs, and that's to provide an avenue of communication between students and administrators. That is one thing that I really think makes this college stand out, is the willingness of the administration and the Board of Trustees to take time and communicate with the students. So I would like to thank you not only for allowing me to come speak today, but also for being constantly there for us to talk to and to work with throughout this semester. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rives. Board?
Mr. Rives. Can't move so soon. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your leadership to the student body and the Student Senate. What do you think is the reason why you have been so successful, other than your leadership in filling 25 of the 30 senate seats?
Well, I think we had a lot of great senators this year who were really passionate about recruiting people, and everybody just wants to be there. We're all friends. We all get along really well, and I think that makes our organization really successful.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
If I could, Trustee Sharp. John, I'd like to compliment you also on how you've handled some very sensitive issues that people are facing across the country and on college campuses everywhere. The panel discussion on inclusion engagement, the discussion you had on weapons on campus, that demonstrated a lot of leadership. So we want to thank you on behalf of the administration and the college itself for your role in bringing that stuff together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The college lobbyist report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Don't want to disrupt anything here. Much to your disappointment, there will not be a poem this year. I'm sure that you're disappointed. It's, I've learned this from my children, it's never your own fault, it's always someone else's fault. And so I've begun to adopt that model of thinking. And if you want to point a finger, Ron Paussek is the issue, because I couldn't find anything that rhymed with Paussek.
Well, Sockchek and Paussek.
So I will deliver my report with, through interpretive dance. There was another line, but I decided I'll forego that one and just deliver the good news. The good news is that revenues were up slightly, I would call them flat, for the month of November. We have one more month till we end the calendar year. That'll put us about halfway through the state's fiscal year. But I think it's important to mention, or at least note, that the reason the budget figures are flat is because when the consensus revenue estimating group met and made readjustments to the budget, it also makes adjustments to the expected revenues. And so we have sort of a new starting point, if you will. And that allows us to, again, capture the revenues as they're coming in for reporting purposes. But keep in mind, the budget that was passed in June of this year has now been adjusted downward based on anticipated future revenues. So I would just, I would just offer that note as we continue to monitor and watch the monies that come in over the course of the months. And we'll continue to do that because it is such an important part of the overall legislative process. It's truly what is driving the end result. We do think that legislators will try and meet and get out of town quickly. Normally, I would not suggest that there would, and when I say that, we're still going to be here, I think, through the first part of May, which is typical for any legislative session. But I don't think that we'll be dealing with some of the major budget battles like we might normally. It's an election year, folks want to get home and run, they have folks that have already filed against them that are working right now, and I think that they don't want to do anything that puts them in a position that further harms their ability to run for office again. And so I think that's what we'll see. There are going to be budget discussions, there are going to be some tense moments. There are some significant conversations out there still to have about where we get the money, how much we're taking from different agencies, what we're doing about K-12 schools. We'll have all of those. Those are all normal conversations that we always have during the budget years and budget cycles. But I do think that there will be an effort to move through the process fairly quickly. I did leave a window on the report, just so you could revisit what some of those findings and adjustments were for the consensus revenue estimating group. Because when I talk about the one month, we tend to forget about what those changes look like when things move forward. And so the fact that we're flat, we've got a little bit of an increase in in some areas, I wanted to at least show you what changes were made. Something that we're watching, though, very closely, and it was missed by a whole host of people, was a little proviso that was in the budget bill that allowed the Department of Transportation to increase their bonded indebtedness 18% above what their revenue stream looks like. And that's not a very common practice, and certainly something that slipped by most folks who are very close to this process. And that's kind of where we're at. And we, our past practices have dictated that that's a pot of money that we can go to for state general fund dollars. And so I would just mention that we continue to watch with caution what goes on with the dollars that are flowing into KDOT. The tax committee, over the course of the interim, met for approving their final recommendations to the legislature. I think the essential takeaway from that meeting on December 9th is that the standing committee, the standing tax committees in the House and the Senate, will develop a criteria for reviewing exemptions in the tax code. There are many, and they are not only sales tax, but there are other areas and other areas of the tax code that organizations or businesses or communities receive breaks. And so I think that that group will take the reins to develop what that looks like over the course of the next year. With it being an election year, I'm not anticipating anything major coming out of that particular process, at least for 2016. But we will continue to be there watching those issues as they do impact the college and its operations. The college hosted its annual breakfast and/or lunch with our Johnson County delegation. I think we had just under half of the delegation participate this year. And when you're measuring things from a legislative standpoint, that's not a bad benchmark to hit. We had great conversations with our folks that participated, and it opened the door to some weighty issues that not only are we dealing with here on campus, but certainly that they are talking about in Topeka. And while we may not agree on every single issue, that's how those conversations get started and where we can move forward. And I am pleased that I think we had great dialogues this year coming out of those particular events. I'm presently working on a reception in Washington DC for when the National Association of Trustees and administrators meet. We did not participate, or we did not host a reception last year. We are doing that again this year. And that will be co-sponsored by all 19 of the Kansas Community Colleges. And is a reception that we put on for the Kansas delegation as well as the staff in their office. And it's a very well-received event, and we get a lot of mileage out of helping coordinate that event, and are happy to do it. Finally, then, as we continue the conversation about the weapons policy, there is a new bill that has been prefiled. And the first initial glance of the bill would seem to appear that it addresses a definition or a clarification of what public areas are. I don't think that any of it is out of line with my understanding of the Personal Family and Protection Act. I'm not sure I used that, the title correctly, but you know what I mean when I speak to that. The issue that I think raises some concern for folks is whether or not the implementation date on the bill, which would be upon signature, would be, I believe it's signature, I would need to go back and look at it, I've just casually glanced at it, would be, does it, does that supersede any agreements or exemptions that are already in place? And that would be of one concern. When you sign on to a deal, you expect that that to be fulfilled through the length of the agreement. And so we're taking a look at that. I would also say that I think it's one of several bills along that front that we'll see. But I did want to bring it up since it's already in the hopper and something that's out there, and we know that it'll likely have a hearing at some point early on in the session. Madam Chair, I would stop there and entertain questions as I'm able.
Questions, come, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carter, many, and I have lost track, so I apologize, but many businesses, when they look at the success of their business from year to year and month to month of those years, will compare where they've been. Does the consensus revenue group build the projection on revenue based on any history? Or is it what they want? I know that the good news is that we're, what, 1.91% over the new estimate. But where is that estimate compared to last year, the previous year, the previous year, at least the last five years? It's one thing to feel good about an estimate, but how do we compare to reality?
I don't know that I can, I don't know that I can define reality. The group of economists are locked in a room, and whether the door's locked or not, I don't know. But they sit around the table, and they talk about the very things that you just mentioned. And they talk about past practices, they talk about historical experiences. And they have to use what they have, the facts and figures that they have, to develop what they believe are realistic expectations for the state's revenue. And just like you said, in any business situation, there can be downturns or unexpected anomalies in the economy or in business practices, and that can impact the bottom line. And I think that's what we've got going on. And so it requires them to force balance, if you will, the books so that we can operate, since Kansas operates in a situation where we have to have a balanced budget at the end of each year. It forces them to true up their numbers, and we'll carry that money forward if we have to. And there'll be either rescissions, or they'll backfill it with a bill at the beginning of the session, or we'll look at future cuts, which I'm sure will also be part of the conversation in 2016. I don't know if that addressed the specifics of your question, but...
Well, we're, we will be, in a few minutes, focusing on some assumptions that we use to build our budget for next year. And I guess if I was on that revenue group, I'd say, well, what kind of revenue has the state collected each month of the year for the year? And what assumptions are we making? We've got a new tax policy, for example. We expected some new growth in sales tax and other areas. So I guess I would expect that they would be evaluating that data to, rather than just say, well, we're going to change our projection so we can hit it, we can be successful one month.
Yeah, we can look at those numbers year to year, and they do look at those numbers year to year. But your point is well-taken, because there are different pieces in play that weren't in play in years past, such as an increase in the sales tax collection amount or a reduction in another area. And so it is difficult to compare apples to apples. You can look at numbers and can compare those, because the bottom line is really what it's all about. But that does raise an important question on what do those comparisons actually look like. Thank you.
Mr. Cross?
Mr. Carter, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carter, the exemptions that are going to be examined, does it include, if I'm speaking in the correct vernacular, does it include the LLC exemptions that were part of, I believe it's the 2012 budget and tax cuts?
When you listen to the committee discussion, the terms that are used are, everything is on the table. I think when you are outside of the committee room, the reality is that the administration does not desire to look at those particular exemptions. There may be some legislators that will come back with a different formula for those personal income tax rates. But I would say that overall, I think we're looking at the sales tax, sales and use tax numbers is what we're really truly looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. We will now move to the fiscal year 2016 public hearing on budget amendments. Last month, you likely remember, the board authorized publication of notice of public hearing for amending the fiscal year 2016 budget. As board members are aware, the college plans to proceed with capital projects that require amendments to the adopted legal budget. These projects have been discussed and opened meetings at several workshops and board meetings. The first project involves renovations to the performing arts venues in the Carlson Center. The second involves infrastructure work to maintain our buildings, particularly HVAC systems in some of our oldest buildings. These amendments do not require any increase in the colleges, in the colleges' mill levy, and we can do this within existing authority. At this time, we will proceed with the budget hearing for the fiscal year 2015-2016 amended budget. I would turn any questions over to Learz, there she is, and Dr. Larson, if anyone has any questions or comments. Okay? Great. I will, I will ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move that it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees accept the amendments to the FY 2015-2016 budget as published and does hereby certify that the budget amendments to the county clerk of Johnson County, Kansas, and I would make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Should I do, was I supposed to do comments before, discussion? Discussion, okay. And then, and then a vote? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. We'll now move to committee reports and recommendations from the management committee. Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The management committee did meet on Wednesday, December 2nd, at 8:00 AM. We have five recommendations to bring forward to you this evening. The first is for the guidelines for the development of the college's 2016-17 budget. These guidelines are published in your board packet on pages 10A to 10B of the packet. These are guidelines that we discussed previously at retreats and other meetings. I will just point out a couple of items. The staff is projecting a 4% increase in assessed valuation for the county in the said period. I will review, I will remind you that we did take action to increase tuition at our October meeting, and we've also implemented the metro rate for individuals residing within certain area counties in the metro area. Our guidelines, however, do predict that we will have credit hour reduction of probably about 1%. And I think nationally, we're still looking at 4% to 6% enrollment reduction. So even though we're not pleased with the reduction, we're doing better than the national average. Next year's budget will reflect no change in budgeted state aid. We did, just as a reminder, reflect a 5% decrease in state aid from last year. These guidelines will help our budget, our college budget administrators in planning for next year. Budget work has already began, but the process will accelerate when staff return in January. As a reminder, the board will approve the management budget for fiscal year 2016-17 in May of next year. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the preliminary guidelines for the development of college's fiscal year 2016-2017 budget, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Trustee Cross.
I plan to vote no on the guidelines, for among other reasons, that the cost of tuition, I'm happy that it's only going up $2 per credit hour on our students, but it's still going up. I fully support the metro rate, I think that's a good idea. State aid remains flat. I think that while I have confidence in this board's ability to administer the college and work for a budget, I believe we need more money from the state. And finally, I don't agree that there should not be any new full-time faculty or staff positions hired. So for these reasons and others, I plan to vote no.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Please note, trustee Cross's dissension, next.
The next two recommendations are related to the college's sale of the general obligation capital outlay bonds. Again, these are items that we have discussed and considered with a number of our facilities, some of which, I'll remind, our community and this board are 40 years old. Proceeds from this bond sale will significantly improve the college's infrastructure, particularly the HVAC equipment with, that trustee Sharp mentioned in the reading of the hearing, and more efficient technology to improve building comfort and realize energy savings. We heard a pretty extensive report on energy savings a couple of meetings ago, and even while our efficiency has improved greatly, we still battle increased rates with utilities. And so we are always focusing on energy savings. Financial services staff have worked with our bond advisors from Piper Jaffray and our bond counsel Gilmore &amp; Bell on this issuance. I'm pleased to report that Moody's Investors Services has extended the college's AAA rating for this bond sale, which, by the way, is no easy feat to accomplish. And Mr. Henderson will probably speak to that a little bit more. Earlier today, working with Bill Henderson from Piper Jaffray, the college accepted bids for this bond issue. And at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Henderson to the podium to discuss those proceedings and give us an update on the bond sale.
Thank you. I believe you've got a handout that I'm going to speak from. It was a very successful sale today. We took competitive bids at 10:00 AM this morning and had 10 bids, which, for me personally, is a record. I've never had 10 bids on a bond issue. So that in and of itself was a great outcome, but the bid, the rate that we received was equally impressive. The rate, the successful bidder Wells Fargo Bank submitted a bid of 1.003 to interest cost, which obviously is lower than we projected when we started the process. So I feel really good about that outcome. As a part of the sale process, as trustee Cook mentioned, the Moody's affirmed the AAA rating, general obligation bond rating of the college. In this day and age of, you know, most local governments across the country facing various credit issues, things like pension issues, you know, declining tax bases, et cetera, you know, the number of people that they put at that AAA level continues to go down. And as a result, I think the college should be very proud of that AAA rating. In the report, which I hope all of you have had a chance to review, they were, the things that they highlighted about the college's credit, one was a sizable tax base that we're, we enjoy here in Johnson County. But additionally, they also commented on the sound financial practices of the college, along with strong liquidity and low debt. So those are things that I know the college pays attention to, and this is the outcome of those efforts, that we were able to get the AAA rating. I do think the 10 bids are definitely, the reason we received 10 bids were the result of that AAA rating. Just, you know, the opportunity to buy a AAA credit just is not available in the marketplace. And as a result, I think there's a lot of, a lot of interest on the part of investors, which is, you know, the firm's sense, and that's the reason that they submit the bid. The, on the sheet, I've got the sources and uses of funds, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. The bond issue, the final sizing on bond issue is $8,970,000. The way that the bid specifications work is we allow bidders to pay the college any place, anything from 100 cents on the dollar to 110 cents on the dollar. The college is totally economically neutral. You can, you can, use a bond issue, you pay principal and interest. There's two columns, if you can imagine, on the amortization schedule. The college is neutral as to which column the money's in, so to speak. So in this instance, the bidder actually paid a dollar price right at 110%, so there'd be a lot of premium paid by the bidder to the college. And so we receive a premium of $922,000. The result is that the project fund will be funded at $9,840,000, so those will be the proceeds that the college will be able to use to make its improvements. With the board's approval tonight of the two actions before you, we will be working towards closing on January 6th of 2016. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Gary Anderson from Gilmore &amp; Bell is present. Tonight, we're asking the board to consider two motions. One is to accept the bid of Wells Fargo, and the other one is just to adopt the bond resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And I'm sure, I want the board to totally understand, and the public, we've been talking throughout this process of a 9.8. And Mr. Henderson has done a nice job of explaining that premium, but I want to make sure you understand that the sale of the bonds... that premium, but I want to make sure you understand that the sale of the bonds is for that 8.9 number.
Trustee Lundstrom, you have a question?
I have a couple of general questions. How common is it for a community college to have a AAA bond rating?
There are a handful out there, and typically, oftentimes, I know I've talked with Barbara and Rachel about a few of them. The number's declining. Moraine Valley, I think I'd sent to Barbara a couple of weeks ago up in Illinois, was just recently downgraded from AAA to AA+. I can't tell you the exact number, there's one or two down in Texas and a couple in the Chicago metro area, maybe one in the state of New York come to mind, so, but there's not, there's not a lot of AAA rated. And in the Midwest, quite frankly, there's, I'm not even sure Des Moines holds a AAA anymore, so.
And my other question would be, was there, were you surprised, because of the AAA bond rating, were you surprised that someone who you thought might bid, did not bid?
No, no, I was surprised at the number that did bid, to be honest with you.
You had mentioned that.
Typically, I will, I would say that on a sale of this size, with this maturity schedule, we would have been thrilled with six, would have been happy with four.
Okay, great, thank you.
I would say again that when we adopt the guidelines for approving budgets, those are assumptions that we take pretty seriously, and although, Trustee Cross, I appreciate your comment about your feeling on those, we try to be very specific about where we've been and where we're going. And I just want to commend Dr. Sobchak, you and the staff, Financial Department, for that effort to plan properly and follow through to allow us to have a AAA rating, because, because they just aren't occurring that frequently anymore, and we should not, as a community or a college, take that for granted. Are there other questions of Mr. Henderson? If not, Dr. Sobchak, did you have a comment?
Well, thanks for the compliment, Trustee Cook, but that's a reflection on the work of the entire campus community to make it obviously appealing to the lenders. Dr. Larson, how are we going to pay this off, and how long will it take?
These are five-year terms, so this will be completely paid four and five years, and we will be spending the majority of this within a few years.
And the funds will come from capital outlay, correct?
They will be budgeted in the capital outlay budget, correct?
That's terrific, thanks.
It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve awarding the sale of $8,970,000 of general obligation capital outlay bonds, Series 2016, to Wells Fargo, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Second recommendation of the Management Committee, that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the final resolution contained in the Board Packet authorizing the issuance and delivery of $8,970,000 of general obligation capital outlay bonds, Series 2016, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Bill, thank you for your work, and your colleagues for the great work we did on this, and the faculty and students and community will look forward to the improvements made with this, with this process, and Barbara, thank you for pushing it through, thank you. There were two recommendations based on bids or requests for proposals. The first relates directly to work that will be financed with bond proceeds just awarded. The bid is for turnkey project services for energy and infrastructure upgrades. The purpose of this RFP is to establish a contract for providing comprehensive energy analysis, engineering design, subcontractor selection and pricing, construction administration, and management commissioning, and energy savings verification services, so we submit the following recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from Outcome Construction Services, LLC for turnkey project services for energy and infrastructure upgrades at a rate of 15.3% of the estimated 7.9 million construction cost, or $1,208,700, with the agreement subject to separate bond approval, bond issuance, and receipt of sufficient bond revenue to fund this project, and review by college council, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Again, I would say that serious consideration has been done by staff and the Management Committee, and while this looks like we're taking quick action on this, this is a result, again, of several, several months and weeks of study and analysis.
Thank you, Trustee Cook, other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $114,882 from Geneco LLC, plus an additional $11,488 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $126,370 for the OCB third-floor restroom remodel, and I'll make that motion.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Management Committee received several reports from staff. These included an excellent presentation from Karen Martley on the college's continuing education program. Rachel Learz reported that the 2015 tax levy rates have been published by the County Clerk's Office. The college's final 2015 tax levy rate for the general fund is 8.934. Capital outlay fund is .501, and special assessment fund is .034 for a total of levy of 9.469. The total valuation is $8,596, that's a bigger number than I can read.
Eight billion.
Eight billion, thank you. I was expecting a dot to be there, and it was a comma, is $8,596,593,490. Mitch Borchers presented the sole source report, as well as a summary of bids between 25,000 and 100,000. This summary can be found on page five of your Board Packet. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and his report is on page 11 of the Packet. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will take a remedial course on reading numbers. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. Now we move to Human Resources, and Trustee Drummond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You will find on page 14 through 21 of your Packet, the minutes of our Human Resources meeting. We met Monday at 9:30 a.m. in Robert Lidle Conference Room. There were several staff members there, as well as Trustee Ingram and myself. We had a brief meeting, but very substantive meeting. The major item that we had was a recommendation, I'll come to you in just a second, it was a recommendation that grew out of complying with the master agreement. Items that did not, that it did not address, these were proposed updates that served to clarify intellectual property rights for works created by college employees. And there was a lot of red ink there, brought back my elementary school days, but I read it all, and we talked through it, and I would like to make a motion, it is a recommendation of the Human Resource Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the Board policies, as you will find in your Packet, and I would so move that.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And in my haste to get through our recommendations this evening, I was on a roll, and I skipped over my own report. On collegial steering, we had no, we took no action, and so I just skipped right over it. We, collegial steering did meet this week, and we had a good discussion on student inclusion and some of the activities that our college is undertaking, both throughout the college as an institution, but also from the Student Senate perspective, on inclusion activities, and as Mr. Rives mentioned, the panel discussion on that topic that went quite well. I was also very impressed with how these events have been managed by the Student Senate, and the conduct of our students has been truly impressive. We're just trying to make sure that we're keeping on our radar the issues of student inclusion for race, ethnicity, gender, religion, and all these things, and making sure that we're a place that's welcoming to everyone. So we took no action, and that really concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions, but I have a couple other items on Human Resources.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
That's okay. That's all right.
The second item was, we had a report on the performance management process update, and basically what has happened is the performance management process for all full-time, part-time, and non-faculty employees was emailed out by the supervisors for distribution of employees to complete and return the self-evaluations prior to the holiday break. Then the supervisors will complete their section of employee performance evaluation during the month of January. It's a really strong process that we've developed across the years, and I think it's going to continue to show dividends. Another item was a retirement incentive update. We received a report about this program, and applications of programs were accepted from September 15th through 30th. We had a total of 22 employees applying for the program. These applicants consisted of 12 faculty members, eight administrators, and two staff members. The estimated cost of the college would be about $934,000, and we expect to pay back within one and a half years to recover the cost of the retirement incentive. The college reserves the option to offer this program again in fiscal year 2017, and we will consider that and report back to you. The final item, Madam Chair, is we had exit interview report. Our exit interviews now are done electronically, and I think that is beginning to grow in terms of the numbers, because it's been offered electronically and not the method that we have chose before. So that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Drummond. I apologize for real writing over you.
No problem.
Onto learning quality, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on December 7th, 2015, at 8:00 a.m. in this room. That meeting began with sabbatical reports being presented by Professors Andrea Broomfield and Mark Rudisner. Dr. Andrea Broomfield, Professor of English, reported on her experiences as a student in the Culinary Academy here at the college. She enrolled in seven credit course hours of culinary courses that many students in her Composition One Food Focus course take as well. Enrolling as a first-year student in the Culinary Academy, earning the Serve Safe certification, and experiencing an online course through a student's perspective, has helped Dr. Broomfield better design her course. Dr. Broomfield developed the Composition One course with focus on the topics especially relevant to the needs of the student, of a student in the Culinary Academy. In her report, Dr. Broomfield highlighted new course assignments that grew out of experiences and examined how her experiences gave her a fresh understanding of what it means to be a student as well as a professor, and I was particularly happy about her tying together the relevance of learning how to write for those students, and what that means for proposals, either for grant writing or, in my experience, applying the loans, hopefully so those folks can start new businesses. Mark Rudisner, Professor of Journalism and Media Communications, conducted written and telephone surveys and completed onsite visits with college journalism programs similar to the colleges to help with review and modification of journalism curricula to meet the demands of a changing industry. Mark began his research by focusing on and sending letters to 80 community colleges with journalism programs of similar size and budgets to that of ours, or that were especially successful. Twenty-six colleges eventually returned the survey and agreed to visit with Mark regarding their programs. I will say that that is an extraordinary survey return as a former research assistant and undergrad, that's just wonderful. Mark's study has resulted in his effort to upgrade the curriculum in the college's journalism program. Key points of emphasis in updating the program include a greater emphasis on digital media and strategic communications, and building together, building stronger professional relationships with the news media outlets for collaboration with students, and making sure that our college's courses are transferable to four-year institutions. As reflected in the Board Packet, several affiliation, cooperation, articulation, and reverse transfer agreements were brought forward. Clarissa Craig, right? Clarissa presented a new agreement with Phoenix Home Care, Inc., and just for the record, that wasn't in there. I know how to say Craig. The agreement will provide additional clinical opportunities for practical nursing students. Debbie Rulo presented a new continuing education agreement between Edgerton Land Holding Company, LLC and the college. Debbie explained that that will allow use of space for small training center at the logistics port, Kansas City, in Edgerton, Kansas, and it will also allow space for open enrollment and delivery of classes, as well as participation in events, job fairs, and open houses to benefit students, new industries, and the community at large. Finally, Richard Ford introduced Hugh King, who reviewed a new agreement with the OP Tech, National Center for Optics and Photonics Education. This agreement will enable the college to explore offering the AAS electronics degree with an emphasis in photonics. The college is conducting an employer report, it needs an assessment survey targeting employers of photonic, photonics technicians throughout Kansas and Missouri, and the college has partnered with OP Tech, the National Center for Optics and Photonics Education, to assist in the collecting of the survey results. The survey will gather labor market research and occupational outlook for photonic technicians, and the survey will collect data on job growth rate, median salary survey for entry-level positions, and demographics of current workers, among other areas of interest. The data collected will be used to support the college's proposal for an advanced technological education grant from the National Science Foundation. Complete details regarding these agreements can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of this Board Packet. Dr. Dennis Arjo, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, reviewed a number of course edits and course deviations. He noted 16 new technology courses, one new program, and five program edits. Dr. Arjo, Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, brought forward curriculum items to be approved by the Learning Quality Committee. Curriculum changes included numerous HPR course modifications that reflect the decision to remove the physical education requirement from the AA degree. Professor Arjo reviewed a number of course edits, course deactivations, and program edits. And the elimination of the general education requirement, Mr. Anderson, that's in step with what numerous other of our competitor institutions have done. Why, why are colleges doing that?
Well, largely, it's a matter of cost. I mean, students are able to complete their programs more effectively, they can, they can move through their systems, everything transfers with reverse transfer, if someone transfers credit back to the college, if they finish part of their work at the University of Kansas, for example, and then completes their work, their associative arts work here. Our degree was more detailed, more limiting in some ways than the baccalaureate, so having our requirements in alignment with the four-year university requirements enables students to move more efficiently through both their two-year and four-year programs.
And there's many other reasons, and perhaps I am singularly alone focused on why we're eliminating that. The curricular changes presented for the Board's full approval can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of this Board Packet. Holly Dressler, Advisor and Program Facilitator of Access Services, and Vince Miller, Director of the Educational Tech Center, gave a special presentation on the cooperation between access services for students and the Educational Technology Center work video captioning. Matt Gwynn, Coordinator of Deaf Services and Access Accommodations, wasn't able to attend this meeting, but he did prepare a video presentation explaining the positive impact that quality video captioning has had for deaf students in welding class. And as I went and read independently, I know institutions like Harvard and MIT have been sued for not providing adequate closed captioning on the videos that Dave made available. This is quite an issue for institutions, including ours, correct? To be in step with the ADA. Thank you for that. The increased video and audio materials that faculty use in course materials and that the college uses in marketing requires collaboration between access service and the ed tech. Holly noted that this work offers accessibility to all students and fulfills the college's responsibility to follow federal guidelines, ensuring that all of our technology is accessible. Vince explained how his team works closely with Holly's area to be proactive for access service requests so that they can quickly get requested media captioned items online for the deaf, the hard of hearing, and for students who speak English as a second language. The workflow described by Holly and Vince ensures that materials are accessible to all students and to special populations in the community. Adam Spulstra, current Chair of the Faculty Sabbatical Committee, presented 10 sabbatical recommendations from this committee for the 2016 and 2017 academic year. The Learning Quality Committee was provided a brief summary of each of the requests for review, and Adam shared that 40 faculty members attended an orientation on applying for sabbatical, and that 16 actually applied. Due to that number of very good proposals submitted, it was difficult for the committee to cut the numbers down to 10 for recommendation. Criteria used for the selection included personal and professional development, as well as the benefits to the individual, the students, and of course, the college. the benefits to the individual, the students, and of course, the college. Applicants have been notified that the Sabbatical Committee has been recommended for approval, pending official approval by the Board of Trustees, and the Learning Quality Committee agreed to send forward all ten recommendations to the Board of Trustees for official approval. The complete list of recipients can be found subsequently in the consent agenda on this board packet. And I believe, before I conclude my report, may I request of Mr. Anderson, I'm excited about KU volleyball making the Final Four tonight. Additionally, I would congratulate Mr. Musial on K-State qualifying for Bull. But it occurs to me, I know frankly very little about how our fall sports went here. Could I ask for a report, perhaps in February when we meet again? Not only on how we did, I can check that out, but what is the relevance to learning quality? Why do we continue to invest in those sports and the importance to the campus? That does conclude my report, Madam Chair. I'm sorry for its length, but it was a lengthy meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did we not limit the number of sabbaticals a couple of years ago? Why do I have seven in my mind?
The contract actually says it could be up to eighteen, and we did lower it to ten, but it's been at ten for quite a while.
Okay, thank you. This may be out of time, but it's a learning quality issue. I happened to be at a social event in downtown Kansas City last Saturday night, and a couple approached me, parents, and they knew I was a trustee here, and they wanted to tell me that their son who attended a four-year school last year, and I won't mention where, it's not necessary, but did not have a good experience, came to Johnson County Community College, and in the first semester, particularly under the instructorship of Brent Jackson, faculty member Brent Jackson, they said, "Our son has turned his life around. He couldn't wait to enroll for the second semester, and he's recruited three of his friends to come with him as well." So I just wanted to point out that to have a set of parents come at a rather large event and search me out of the crowd to say that this faculty member changed their son's life, I thought was pretty commendable, and I think that's a learning quality issue, Trustee Cross.
Well, I'd like to take credit, but it's really...
Thank you, Trustee Cook. Any further questions or comments? All right, let's move to the President's Recommendations for Action and the Treasurer's Report, Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am pleased to present the Treasurer's Report for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, which can be found on pages in your packet, number twenty-seven to thirty-six. Some items of note include, on the first page of the report, the Treasurer's Report, you'll find that the General PTE Fund's summary, as of the end of October, thirty-three percent of our fiscal year has now expired. An ad valorem tax distribution of one million, two-hundred-and-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight was received from the county treasurer during October and was distributed as follows. The General Fund received one million, one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Capital Outlay Fund received sixty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. The Special Assessment Fund received the balance of four thousand, three-hundred-and-seven dollars, for a total of one million, two-hundred-and-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of ten-thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen in all funds was seventy-point-three million, which is approximately eight-point-one million dollars higher than the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending October thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. We now move to Dr. Sobchak and the monthly report to the board.
First, I'd like to thank Trustee Sharp for not blowing by this agenda item, demonstrating that you can truly run an efficient meeting. Thank you.
And snacks.
And snacks as well, yes. Trustee Sharp provided snacks for everybody. Please note that Trustee Musial never does such a thing for...
Snacks in short meetings, snacks in short meetings.
But seriously, we'd like to thank everyone for a very good semester. Faculty, the staff, the students, the leadership in all areas really worked hard to make this very special, and we all worked together for student success. So we'd like to thank you very much for that. To the trustees, thank you as well, and thank you for the confidence that you demonstrate for the people here who work on this campus. That's a big part of our success, and we're very thankful for that. You have in front of you a report, the standard report, that features twenty-eight pages of accomplishments by members of our faculty and staff that contribute to student success. Now normally, I would launch in to the President's Report, but tonight, we're going to do something a little different. In the holiday spirit, we have a special holiday gift for you. Rather than me just talking about the past month and all the incredible things that happen here at the college, I'd like to present to you a sampling of the work, of the fine work, of our staff, faculty, and students. Every month, I personally experience some pretty remarkable things that happen here. The story that Dr. Cook told isn't unusual. We get those kinds of reports all the time. I believe this afternoon, we sent to you a letter from another very satisfied family in our community. This is what this college does. But you know, I can put those into words, as I try to do every month, but I think seeing is believing. So tonight, you're going to see two examples of really cool things that we're doing here at Johnson County Community College, and we'd like to get started by Jenny Kroom coming to the podium. Jenny is our Director of the Career Pathways Program. Jenny?
Thank you. The Career Pathways Office organized the STEM Conference for middle-school girls on December eighth in the Rainier Center. We had over a hundred students from five local middle schools, and partnerships for this great conference included the KC STEM Alliance, Balance Innovation, and the Alatha Schools Foundation. The students were actively involved in the following breakout sessions: engineering exercises, Littlebits NASA kits, spatial rotation tests, and the You Can Teach math kits. Women leaders in the STEM world, from Cisco to BE Aerospace Engineering, came to work with these students one-on-one. The first event of the day, which you will see in the following news clip, focused on the annual Hour of Code event, and twenty-eight predominantly female STEM leaders in the community came to mentor the students during this activity. I'll show you the clip now. So Angie Suderlin was an integral part of the STEM Conference, and she recently launched a Girls Who Code Club here on campus that targets girls six through twelve. And the mission of this club is to inspire, educate, and equip girls with the competing skills to pursue twenty-first century opportunities. In addition, she has four female software engineers from Firemon serve as volunteer instructors for the club. And Firemon is an enterprise security management company headquartered right here in Overland Park. I would now like to introduce Angie, who is an Associate Professor of Computer Science and Information Technology. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. That was a great event to be involved in. Good evening. The student group that you're about to hear from are graduating soon with their Associate of Applied Science degrees in Computer Information Systems. This degree provides students with the skills needed for entry-level software development and related positions. The students will be presenting a condensed version of their final presentation from the CIS-264 Application Development and Programming Course, which serves as a capstone course for this degree. In this course, teams of two to three students are matched with real-world client to solve a business problem with a prototype software solution. Additionally, industry partners from local businesses and software development companies come to the classroom over the course of the semester to discuss current development best practices with the students. Resumes and LinkedIn profiles are built. Mock interviews with feedback are conducted by industry partners. Now I'd like to introduce the student team, who recently completed building a unique inventory management prototype software solution for Heartland Habitat for Humanity, and their client Tom Lawley's here as well. I'll give you Mindy Schwartz, Matt Messing, and Eli Ziyafar.
All right. Madam Chair, President Sobchak, distinguished board members, and guests, we are very excited and honored to be here with you. We're excited to be invited. We are Team Restock. My name is Matt Messing, and this is Mindy Schwartz, and this is Eli Ziyafar. As Angie mentioned to you, we had the great pleasure of working with the Heartland Habitat for Humanity Restore Department. Specifically, we worked with Tom Lawley, President and Chief Executive Officer. As you may know, the Heartland Habitat for Humanity specializes in building houses for the underprivileged community, and their Restore Department specifically is a warehouse for donations of used and some new housing materials.
So what we noticed when we took a look at their process is they only use masking tape and Sharpies for things that would come through the door. They didn't have any inventory tracking system. They had no way to follow what was on their shelves. Once it was in, it got forgotten and left. They didn't have a lot of functionality to their system that we really think that they could have used.
So Tom had some specific requirements for us. First and foremost, he wanted our system to be easy to use. Most of their employees are not tech savvy, so it had to be easy to learn and easy to use. He also wanted to have Facebook integrated into the system. He also wanted to have unique items be able to be posted to their database through uploading pictures through their phone or device. And to have as few clicks as possible, he wanted to have where the employee was located on the login page, so they only had to do it one time. Most importantly, it had to be fast. We were able to complete all of these requirements. We were able to do a one-click Facebook share for them. They are now able to keep track of their inventory, both by category and location. And then if they choose to do so, they can publish their inventory to their website so their customers can see. And most importantly, we made it easy to use.
We used a lot of different tools as we developed this project. The main one that we used, which we found a lot of frustration with, but also a lot of use for, was Visual Studio. We also were able to host our website on a Johnson County Community College server.
We used FileZilla to take our Visual Studio project and put it onto the server, and then we used SQL Server to manage our database, and AppHarbor to host the database.
Excuse me now, Mindy, for those of us up here who are not this technologically oriented, what are all those things you just talked about?
For everyone.
Yeah, exactly. We won't identify ourselves, but you can just let us know a little bit more about those.
I resemble that concept.
Well, the server is where we put our project on to, so you can see it on the internet. So as soon as you type in the URL, you can see our project. And then FileZilla is how you get the project onto the server. Literally, you take your project and you put it on the server.
So is that like Godzilla, but they did FileZilla?
I mean, kind of sort of.
Okay.
FileZilla is like a software to get to the server.
Right, right. And then SQL Server is where you manage your database, so you can create your tables and create your relationships and make it so that you can use the database elsewhere. And then AppHarbor, you have to have your database on a server in order to access it from the internet. Otherwise, you can't get to it.
So next, we use codepen.io and JS Fiddle. These are a little more simple than what she used. They're just websites where we used the functionality to preview changes. So instead of changing our final product and then having to roll back and not break anything, we use these two websites to check everything before we uploaded them. And we also use Google Hangouts, which is fantastic. We use it to keep in touch pretty much permanently. I mean, we were linked at the hip. Even last night, to practice this presentation, we were video calling each other, and it's a lot of fun. These two are a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun. One of the first prototypes that we developed used two languages, in particular C sharp and ASP.net. If you have a little bit of a question of what those are, if you go into an Excel spreadsheet and you use some formulas, those are all based on some of the similar concepts as ASP.net and C sharp. While we found that there were some challenges with those languages, they were very useful and very user-friendly. We also used SQL, which is a database language, to manage the connection between our application and the database.
We used HTML for front-end design to make sure everything looked nice and pretty for Tom, and CSS and Bootstrap to kind of make sure the HTML played nice on the screen, with JavaScript to make sure that it worked well on mobile, which you'll see later.
So how do you make all this work together? Are you just making that up, and you really only use one thing?
Well, sure. So...
Actually, you can enroll in this course.
Well, I'm watching Tom over here. I'm watching Tom, seeing how he's digesting this. Okay.
This is the application that a store associate would use, and so let's say that I'm a store associate. I would choose my location, where I'm at, and then log in, and if somebody came in with a bunch of paint or with some molding that they wanted to donate, what I would do is log in. The simplest way to insert a record is for me to select a category from the dropdown list and then simply push the insert button, and that's it.
And it's there, at the very top, so all of the newest records come to the top. The next way an employee could enter a record would be to choose a category, say furniture, and then you would click Choose a File. And on a mobile device, it would say at the bottom, Take Picture or Choose From Gallery, or yeah. And on a desktop, you get to choose a picture that you've already taken. So we'll do a chair, and we can type in a comment. We can say, "Pink chair," and insert. And there it is, right at the very top. So the next thing you could do is you could post to Facebook. So this is a really cool, unique chair. Let's put it on Facebook so all of our followers can see what we do and what we have. So we click Share, and it's going to go on your own timeline, so you share the link, and then you go to Facebook. Oh, wow, okay. And you refresh it, and there's our pink chair. So now all of our followers can see, "Oh, we've got this really cool pink chair. Let's go buy that from them."
So the next thing we're really excited about is, if I could have Mindy grab the screen and resize it. Like I mentioned earlier, it is mobile-friendly, so as she starts dragging, you're going to notice that columns are dropping from the table based on their importance to the end user. So that would be Tom and his crew, and then the customers that they're servicing. You'll also notice that the nav bar across the top, make it big real quick, you might have missed it, where you've got internal database and maintenance and such, that also shrinks down to be real mobile-friendly when she shrinks the screen into what we call a hamburger, which is basically a clickable menu, and there's everything. Preserving mobile functionality was super, super important to us because it was mentioned pretty early on that they would use this primarily mobile, so that's something we're really proud of.
The next page is our internal database page, where they can, this is a page that they could post to their website so people could see what they have. And they can choose by location, so you can choose Johnson County, and it'll show all of the items that are available at the store right now at Johnson County. And so there's our pink chair. You can also do by category or both.
We also included a maintenance page where the store associates could include items, if they wanted to include an additional category, or as they grow, which I'm sure that they will, they could include an additional location, and they would be able to use that when they inserted new records into the database. So we loved working with Habitat for Humanity. As every company finds, though, with every client, there was a little bit of hesitancy, as was to be expected whenever any company works with another client. The first time that we met with Wally, who's one of the vice presidents at the Restore location, he gave us, I think, about a list of ten reasons why this would not work. And I think I speak for my team, we were a little disheartened and a little discouraged, but we took that challenge, and we moved forward. So what we did when we met with Wally again two weeks ago, and we showed him the demo, and we showed how easy it was to do on his phone, he took charge, and he took us around to about five or six different items that they had in the store, and he was taking pictures, and he was really excited about this. He was like a child at Christmas time.
At our last meeting with Tom, he was really happy with our final product, and he was able to use it with very little guidance, proving just how easy it was to use.
So as they said... So as they said, the client reaction, or interaction, I would say, has been largely positive. What they don't mention is that when you have a project like this, if I would have walked in and Angie had hit me with this, and Angie was my client, I wouldn't have had any of this. But for us, it's been a sort of process. We meet with him every month, and, okay, you don't like this, you like this. It's been development, development, discuss what he likes, discuss what he doesn't like. Whereas if it had been no client, I would have just handed something in at the end of the semester. So it's really interesting. It's very different. It's a different way to do a course, and we learned a lot, I think.
Speaking of learning a lot, we'd like to talk to you about how we're applying this class to what we are doing. About a month after I started this class, I applied for a business analyst position at Overhead Door, which is my current employer right now. And I'll be quite honest, we didn't practice this, and I never told Angie this, but every time we had to do a presentation, I thought, I just don't want to do another presentation. But I'll tell you that what they did as part of my interview process, they gave me a project to take on. I had a project champion that I had to work with, much like Tom, and I have to give a presentation. So I am extremely grateful for all of the presentations that we gave and all of the experience that I had. I have no doubt in my mind that this class provided a repository and a scaffolding from which I've drawn from to get this far in the application process.
Yeah, and it really, really emphasized working with the client, which has been really beneficial and prepared us for the real life of, that's what's going to happen. You're going to have a client that's a little hesitant to change, and you have to change their mind.
Those both are very great things, I think, and experience is invaluable. But the most important thing I think I've taken away from this, and I've already bragged to you guys and my boss, we have something that's tangible, something that's out there that's being used. It's not, as I said last slide, something that's just handed to Angie. That's something that's in production, part of my portfolio. So the first thing I did when this was done, actually, I'd say about 12:45 this afternoon, I went to my boss and I said, "Look at this." And he started handing me things. He's like, "Can you do this? Can you do this?" Yes. So it's really neat to have something out there that I can go to and I can point at and say, "Hey, potential employer, look at this thing. I did this and it's in use." It's really, really awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
No. Now, this is kind of like Shark Tank. This is really fun. You've been talking about the client, but we've got the client here. And I'd like to ask Mr. Lawley to come up to the podium and maybe give us his point of view on this project.
Absolutely. What a great commercial for Heartland Habitat for Humanity. Let's do this every week. I like this a lot. We've had the opportunity at Heartland Habitat for Humanity to work with a lot of student interaction. We've had some high school students work with us. We've had some technical colleges work with us and some others. And so having Professor Sunderland give us a call, I was expecting student interaction. We did not receive student interaction. We received professional consulting services. And that is phenomenal. So Professor, thank you so much. These folks are phenomenal. Wally was hesitant at first. They won Wally over. I'm so glad that I didn't know all those back things that they had to do because I would have never understood it. They would literally come to my office and say, "Here's the new prototype." And we'd go through it, and I would say, "These are wonderful aspects of it," or "Let's change this," and they would get it done. Highly professional. You should all be proud of the students. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Tom. Fantastic. And you all were terrific. Absolutely fantastic. I just want the board to know, they rewrote their whole presentation and condensed it considerably for this meeting. So, and this is one of several capstone presentations that were given in Professor Sunderland's course. Really a great experience. I would hope perhaps next year, when this occurs, you'll have the time to attend. And hats off to you, Angie, for making this happen. And Ginny, for you as well, for the STEM conference. Super great things. Any questions? Are you going to...
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Lawley, thank you for having the courage to reach out and participate with this team. My question of you three is, so what do you want to do when you get big?
I want to do websites. I enjoy that.
Well, as I mentioned previously, literally a month after I started this course, I interviewed, I applied for a business analyst position. And I feel like I'm on American Idol because this has been a three-month interview process. This project that I got has just evolved and evolved and evolved, and they've done the same things. Well, can you guys do this? And can you do that? And I thought, well, yeah, sure, you know. And I do the final presentation to the CEO of the company on Monday.
Wow.
Great.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm nearing three years of employment at Sprint. I guess I'm one of the lucky ones. And I worked down in their server farm. And to be completely honest, what interests me, and this project was great, I had fun doing the web design, but what interests me is servers and networking and that kind of thing. So I'm kind of hoping to go that direction in the future, I guess.
Thank you, guys. You were terrific. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Trustee Cross, did you have...
Yeah, real quick, before you all go, who here can explain what an hour of coding means? What does it mean to do an hour of coding?
Two, four hours of...
Two more hours of combing your hair.
Yeah, it's never one hour.
Did you want to explain the Hour of Code event? Is that it? Okay, I can do that.
Oh.
The comment in the news story, I'm not trying to be obtuse, but silly, I don't know what it means.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
So Computer Science Education Week always falls in December, coordinated with our finals week, which was unfortunate, but we made it work. And it's worldwide. And so the Hour of Code is kind of the signature event. And they try to get, there's all kinds of tutorials online that make it fun for all ages, they say ages four to 104, to get students, predominantly K through 12, to do an hour of code. And so all over the world, teachers get their kids online and communities to do an hour of code, just to introduce them to computer science. It's really fun stuff. Star Wars, Minecraft, the Frozen movie, they've got great stuff up there.
Thank you.
And lastly, hey, Tom, before you get out the door, thank you for coming here tonight. And also thank you for being a partner with Angie, the students, and this college. Very, very much appreciated. And that concludes my report for this evening.
I should hope so. I wouldn't want to follow that. Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. I don't think that we have any new, any old business. Do we have any new business? Okay, reports from board liaisons, faculty association. Mr. Paulcheck.
You can all follow that?
Yes.
Any questions? That would make the night. Thank you, Vice Chair Stephanie Sharp. I do want to say one thing, and that is, about a year ago, the faculty association was real concerned about our negotiations, and we were going to hire the agent of Coach Charlie Rice. And I'm a little saddened because I'm glad we did not hire that agent because poor Charlie got his last payment from Notre Dame this month, and no more. So he's down to one salary, one from KU. So I feel really bad about that. So I'm glad we didn't get that agent. He would have been worse than us all. We did, I'll give a short overview of what we've done. The faculty association has worked very closely with the faculty senate, with some staff, development, and ed affairs. We had a joint meeting, oh, about three, four weeks ago, well-attended by faculty and staff, about concerns about safety on campus. We had some discussion. We had some board members there. And from there, what came out of it is we need to have more discussion on campus to find out how we feel. And so right now, concurrently with the faculty senate, the faculty association, and ed affairs, we're forming a survey group. And we reached out, and Fort Hays State University has already done a survey. They're working with KU, possibly K-State. And we've already reached out, and we funded the survey through the faculty association. And earlier in January, we will run a survey because we want to find out what the faculty, staff, and possibly administrators, we'll do the survey for all three areas possibly, how they feel about safety on campus. We really need to know. In our last faculty association meeting, we were fortunate to have two senators and a house member. The two senators were Greg Smith, he was in the 21st district, and then Molly Baumgartner from the 37th, is that right? And then also House Speaker Charles, and I think it was Ms. Chesty. Is that right? Ms. Chesty?
Ms. Shear.
Ms. Shear, sorry. Sorry about that. And he's from the 39th district. Now, Greg Smith was the only one that was on the senate when the bill passed that's going to come on the 17th. And it was really brave of them to come to a faculty association meeting, if you can imagine. There was very great deal of respect on both sides. There were some give and take. I think there was a lot of positives that came out of that meeting. We got an idea what they were thinking. We have an idea what we're thinking. And I just wanted to report that this is ongoing on the campus, and it is still foremost in most people's minds. The semester is ending. Most of our students are fairly satisfied. And they are going to take a break that's well-deserved. We'll be starting anew after the break, and our break starts on the spring semester, the day after Martin Luther King's Day. That will be Tuesday, January 19th. And we're really looking forward to that time. If there's any questions for me, I'm open for. That was a hard act to follow, so...
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Paulcheck.
Thank you, and you have a great holiday break. Thank you.
Johnson County Education and Research Triangle Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle Authority, J-CERT, met on Monday, October 26th. The meeting was held at 7:30 at KU Edwards Campus. There was a quorum present, and Chairman Isler presided over the meeting. We received a clean audit report from the accountant. And as of June 30th, 2015, for the past 12 months, the previous 12 months, revenue directed to J-CERT through the 1A sales tax was approximately $16.5 million, or approximately 2.5%, $400,000 more than the previous year. For the same period, the funding directed to the university program support, K-State, Oletha, KU Edwards, and KU Medical Center, they received approximately $16.5 million. Again, approximately $400,000 more than the previous year, or 2.5% again. The authority's total net position is $194,632, which is a decrease from 2014 by about $21,000. And that is due to the budgeted drawdown of existing cash balances to pay for authority's administrative expenses, which coincidentally were just about that $21,000. At that meeting, we also received reports from K-State, from KU Edwards, from KU Medical Center. And finally, receipts for the past two months for October were 2.7% greater than the previous year, approximately $1.4 million. And for November, 3% greater than they were the year before, again, $1,424,559. The next J-CERT meeting is on January 15th at 7:30 a.m., and it's at KU Medical Research Center. And I would invite anyone who wants to attend to do so. That's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. Questions? Okay. KACC.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Sobchak and I did travel to Iowa, Kansas, on December 6th and 7th, a Sunday and Monday meeting at Allen County Community College for our quarterly meeting. Our meeting Sunday afternoon included the trustees and presidents divide and have their own sessions. The trustees worked on trustee development. We had done a SWOT analysis previously on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the state association and to community colleges. And so we were spending some time refining, for example, identifying a strength that might be utilized to take advantage of an opportunity. And one of the issues that we talk about is how we can be more effective in marketing the affordability and accessibility of community college attendance throughout the state, across the state. And while we have 19 community colleges of varying needs and challenges and opportunities, we are attempting to try and speak with one voice. And so we were spending a lot of time on that. Allen County Community College then entertained us to a dinner that evening. And following that dinner, we then spent about an hour into late Sunday evening with the presidents, refining our legislative strategies and issues that are of importance to KACC. Monday morning, again, we had respective meetings. And then the focus of Monday morning was, Mr. Paulcheck, what you have described with the faculty in interest, quite a really good film video discussion on the active shooter on campus. And as we discuss at ACT and at KACC, the campus safety is, of course, probably the leading issue right now in terms of how we ensure that our campuses are safe. Don Ash, Wyandotte County Sheriff, is also a trustee at Kansas City Community College, Kansas City, Kansas Community College. And he led a discussion on the follow-up to the video, which was really interesting. And people didn't want to quit talking about that in terms of the importance to their campuses. We then had a joint meeting. We had our trustee meeting, official business meeting, and the council presidents had their meeting. And then we had a joint meeting and adjourned Monday noon and returned home. I would say that the issue that really is getting a lot of attention among several is this discussion about tech ed funding. And we've been discussing this for some time. It's a rather complicated issue. But the Kansas Board of Regents is asking subcommittee for input to give feedback back to the legislature, which the legislature charged them to do. I believe that report is due in February, as I recall, back to the legislature. And as we know, there are six technical education schools and 19 community colleges. The 19 community colleges basically provide about 75% of the tech ed instruction in the state, and the six tech schools, about 25%. But there's this ongoing discussion about the disparity of, some colleges are undefunded, some are overfunded. We get into tiered one courses, non-tiered courses. It's a really complex issue. I would say that we're fortunate to have Sheila on our staff, who, I don't know if she's left or still here, but she really knows a lot about that. Dr. Sobchak and Andy, of course, has been involved in those tech ed meetings. I had the benefit and privilege of attending one of those tech ed meetings last week, and it was an educational experience. So we're working through those discussions. And I know Dr. Sobchak is involved with the council presidents. I don't know if you have anything more you want to say about that particular meeting. Our next KACC meeting is February 11th in Topeka. It's one of our highlight meetings because that's a time when we honor our Phi Theta Kappa students with a luncheon on that noon. And so we're looking forward to that. I think some of you have indicated an interest to attend that, or at least Cherry has put out an invitation to you to attend that event. We'll also have our KACC meeting at that point. If I might, Madam Chair, I was also on a conference call right before this meeting with the Executive Committee of ACT, the Association of Community College Trustees. And Mr. Carter, I think one of the things that we'll have to discuss and refine is, evidently in the budget approval that was just passed, evidently the Pell Grant request that ACT made were approved. And so the message today was that when we go to DC for NLS, that we thank our delegation, our congressional delegation for the work they did in that. And there'll be more work coming out on the Pell Grant. But we will also, at ACT, talk about campus safety. We'll also talk about the partnership we just had with the National Association of Latino Students, NAELO, National Association of Elected Latino Officials, actually, as they provide programs for their students. And so I think, again, you've had the opportunity to sign up for NLS, and we look forward to that session. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you.
Questions? Trustee Cross.
Yeah, a couple. Mr. Trustee Cook, the Pell Grant was a part of the federal budget being passed?
Yes.
And then for tech ed, you mean the funding, the state funding of the technical schools in the state of Kansas?
Yes.
And are they, are they members of KACC? And are they, are they members of KACC?
No.
No.
Not officially.
But yet, the state, as I understand it, is funding them as if they are community colleges.
That's correct. Well, no. It's complicated, but they do, because they don't have taxing authority, they rely on the state for a large percent of their funding, but I will defer that to...
And I'm not looking to catch anybody here.
Dr. Sobchak and Andy, but this whole question about how much tech schools are funded compared to community colleges, this whole notion of underfunded, overfunded, and it really is kind of complicated.
The six technical colleges are funded solely by the state. Whereas the community colleges have a local mill, the technical schools don't. So they're totally state-funded. There's a little bit of controversy because their growth is coming not in technical education courses, but gen ed courses, which community colleges offer.
So the tech schools are now offering gen ed courses?
Yes.
With no local option funding?
Exactly.
Or oversight.
Yeah. So it's an interesting dynamic here between the community colleges and tech schools. You could make the argument that now with them offering gen eds, they have sports teams, in a sense, the state has an additional six community colleges, which would give them a grand total of 25 community colleges, which would probably put us in the lead nationally, I think, per capita. But it's ongoing, and we met yesterday, and it will continue to be an issue through the months ahead.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, trustee Cook. And we'll now move to the consent agenda portion of the board meeting. The board will not consider the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of routine and consensus items that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda and consider it as a separate item? I'm aware of, there is a correction to the consent agenda. Is there anything else a board member has?
Trustee Sharp, we do have a correction to the consent agenda. Dr. Korv.
Yes, there's just a technical change to a date. The very first item, Clarissa Craig's retirement, is listed there, and it says that it's effective July 1. That needs to be noted in the minutes, that it actually is effective June 30, 2016.
I need to have a motion to make that change?
No, it's fine. As long as it's in the minutes, we're good.
Well, I would say with that correction, I'll move the consent agenda.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Consent agenda passes. We do not have an executive committee meeting. So with that, I will adjourn today's meeting, and Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy New Year. Adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.